As the Mayor Pro Tem of the Town of Clayton, I now call this regular town council meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this blessed day, and as we go about the town's business, we ask that you guide us in making the proper decisions for the town. I ask this in your name. Amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There is one adjustment. We would like to pull from item number eight, C, and pull that from the agenda for a later date. That is the resolution to declare surplus property.
Shall I note that? Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next item, under administrative items, will be a recommendation of appointments to the Downtown Development Association Advisory Board.
Yes, you have before you five names of people that are being recommended for appointment to the DDA. There were a total of five vacancies. They have been advertised. Everybody who applied was interviewed, and it is the recommendation of staff that the following people be appointed.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Approved. Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the advisory board, new advisory board members, as noted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resolutions authorizing Johnston and Wake Counties to collect taxes on behalf of the Town of Clayton.
Yes, you have before you two different resolutions. They are done on an annual basis, and they authorize both Wake County and Johnston County to collect taxes on behalf of the Town of Clayton.
Approved. Second.
Should we carry these as separate approvals?
I can take them as both. That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a motion in a second to approve the adoption of Resolution 2019-22 and 2019-23. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda will be introductions and special presentations, and I believe we will start with Byron Pullman.
Good evening. Rich Capola, Director of Public Services. Byron unfortunately had to attend a funeral this evening, so I have the pleasure of introducing Michael Carpenter. Michael is taking the position of Utility Maintenance Mechanic in our Preventative Maintenance Division within water and sewer. He comes from us in the Town of Smithfield, where he worked for about six years, doing very similar work. He had his Grade II Collection System Operator Certificate and recently obtained his Grade C certificate as well, so we're very appreciative of having somebody like Michael come in with a lot of experience that can hit the ground running. So, Michael?
Thank you, guys, for having me. I'm excited about the opportunity to learn and grow with the Town of Clayton, so I hope I can serve you guys well.
Welcome to the team.
I would love to say that I'm on call, so...
A good excuse.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Council Members, Dale Mattle, Electric Director, Town of Clayton. This young man to my left right here has come to us. Today was his first day. He's going to work with us this summer for about 360 hours, maybe a little longer. He come through the JOCO apprenticeship program that we've been working on with our other town members, Benson, Selma, Smithfield, as a joint use project along with the school system and along with electric cities. So it's been a joint effort, and this young man's definitely done his part. He had to go to school on the weekends during the school year, one month a week, so he attended 10 sessions, eight hours a day, and then he had to go through a stringent interview process. I was one of the interviewers to make it to this point. So where he's at now, it was not given to him, it was earned, and we're really happy to have him on board. Young man's name is, he goes by JD, it's Joshua Bradley, but he goes by JD, so I'll give him an opportunity to say something.
Hey, truly grateful for this opportunity, be with y'all, work for y'all and everything. It's a good opportunity.
Thank you, Josh. Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Lee Barbie, Fire Chief. We work as a team, so we come as a team to be introduced. All of the staff that's here to be introduced, but one, have been before you before, so for time-wise, I'm kind of shorting it up a little bit. Kevin Stansel, Kevin on the end, took the fire, new fire inspector position, so that left a captain open on shift. Stacy Turner was promoted to captain, and then the field his lot, Cory Beard, moved up from firefighter to fire equipment operator, and Anthony Marino also moved up to fire equipment operator due to a vacancy we had with another driver. Cody Golf, behind me, he took firefighter position. Chandler Parrott, firefighter position. Let me get my paper right here. Monica Moniz took our firefighter, part-time firefighter FTE position. Wesley Johnson took our part-time FTE position, and then Joseph Brehan, this is his first time before you tonight. He applied when we did the full-time openings. He did not get the position, but he had an interest. He is a graduate of Rosewood High School in 2018. He went through Johnson Community College Fire Academy, graduated last November. He has family that is in the fire service, and he has an interest in the fire service. We felt like he had potential, and so we kept him on the list when we had this opening, when we did the next shuffle, and that gave him an opportunity to come on as one of our part-time guys, and then within two weeks, I think it was, we offered him the daytime FTE position. So we welcome him aboard. So I'll leave it. Anybody want to have any comments for the council?
Thank you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to have you all on our team. We really appreciate what it is you do. Next item on the agenda will be public hearings, and we will start with Recreation Open Space Credits, number 2019-86-0A.
Samantha, the Will and Labor Planning Director. This is the Recreation Open Space Standards, and this was heard at the June 3 meeting, and this has continued to this meeting. It is for an amendment to Chapter 55, which is our Unified Development Ordinance, and the request is to amend the requirements of the Recreation Open Space Standards to require all residential subdivisions to pay 100% of the required recreation fees. Currently, if you provide open space, you get a 50% credit. Again, open space subdivisions currently receive a 50% credit towards recreation fees. That's only for open space subdivisions, but also applies to planned developments. And the request is to remove that statement, and then for subdivisions, all subdivisions open space planned development and conventional subdivisions to pay 100% of the required recreation fees. And the fees are used to meet the demand for additional recreation facilities, and the new fees are outlined in our comprehensive fee list, and I will ask Scott to come forward to discuss those, the changes with those, to present those tonight as well.
Yeah, I don't want to confuse the issue, though, and Scott, you can do that, but what we're trying to ask for tonight is an amendment, obviously changing the ordinance, and we're going to hold a public hearing, possibly at that July meeting. We have to discuss changing the fees as they're currently listed. Just as a reminder, when we adopted the budget, we also adopt our fees, and those fees will be changing to $1,000 starting on July 1. But because this is still an unresolved issue, the town would, in fact, simply, at the council's wishes, begin charging $750 effective July 1 until we can resolve the issue, and that may be the fee we're at for a little while. But even though the fee schedule says 1,000 as adopted, we would, in effect, only charge 750 until that is resolved, possibly as soon as that July 15 meeting, or it could be later than that. But Scott can outline, I think, the idea of what these parks and recreation fees might go to is something we presented to the developers at a breakfast last Friday, something we discussed with you all through the budget and since. But tonight, the issue, the public hearing, is about changing the ordinance, and Samantha has just suggested the fee situation is not going to be resolved tonight, but we hope that as, possibly as early as July 15, we could resolve that through a, in a public hearing or later, depending on the wishes of the council.
Staff does recommend approval of the ordinance amendment, and Planning Board also recommended approval, and again, this is only the ordinance language in the zoning ordinance to remove, in the subdivision ordinance to remove the 50% credit. Just to be clear, that's all, that is the decision for this ordinance amendment. We can just stay with this, or if you want Scott to talk about the proposed phases, it's at the will of the council.
I've probably been more vocal on this than most, but I struggle with people who have already submitted proposals that have been approved in calendar, I'm sorry, fiscal year 2018, 2019, and I personally think that we need to hold fees at a number, not sure what that would be at this point, for a period of one year, which allows them the opportunity to plat additional properties or lots, if they will, at the current price, I say current price, I will say at $750. There has been some discussion, which I'm also quite frankly interested in, that instead of just the fiscal year 2018, 2019, that we also possibly take into account fiscal year 2017, 2018. I think that's probably new information to this council. I received that late this afternoon, as possible. Instead of just having a fixed fee for people who have already submitted plans that have been approved in calendar year 2018, I'm sorry, fiscal year 2018, 2019, we would also include ones that have been approved in fiscal year 27, 2017, 2018. Now, I'm not saying we do that, but I'm saying that was brought to my attention as a potential further option if we chose to do that.
The proposal should, what you're saying, the proposal should be all new applications in 2019 and 2020.
In 20, that would go, my personal opinion would be, we modify the, I'm sorry, currently we're looking at $1,000 effective July 2019. I would leave that. In our, in our agenda packet, there is a proposal showing July 19 would be 750. I'd be inclined to say no. Let's keep it at 1,000.
Let's pull it up on the screen so we can all see it.
Can you go to the agenda packet and pull up that benchmarking sheet? Under this section.
While they're pulling that up, I'm also in favor of doing away with the 50% discount effective July 1.
Mr. Grantis, would you like the, our projects approved in 17, 18, 18, 19 at 750?
Correct.
A lot or 375?
750.
Okay.
And that would, yeah. The approval of subdivisions that are applicable to this particular fee. That would not apply in my suggestion. I'm good with that. One other thing that I would like to conclude, too, is since I'm saying that we go to $1,000 on July 2019 for new, that are effective after July 1. Then January 2020 would be 1,500, and then July 2020 would be 2,000. You do away with January 1, 2021, you go to July 2021 and go to 3,000. July 2022, you go to 4,000. July 2023, you go to 5,000. July 2024, you go to 6,000.
Any other discussion on the ordinance amendment?
No, but can you give me a hard copy of this, please, with some screen now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So it's my understanding, then, that we will not take a vote tonight, and that we will defer this public hearing?
No, Mr. Grantis, sorry. You will take a vote on the ordinance, not on the fee, right?
Okay.
There's no public hearing related to the fee this evening.
Okay.
So this is a public hearing set for, set for the purpose of discussion of changing the ordinance, as Samantha described it. Maybe we can put that back up so that it's clear that, I just want to make sure it's clear for the record of what, in case there's anyone in the, in the public that wants to speak to it and for the council. So this would be in an ordinance amendment, which would require action by the board on both the ordinance as well as a reasonable inconsistency statement, it's a text amendment. The council's direction to the staff that I just heard is to assess a $750 recreational fee until such time as this council establishes some other fee and sets forward different direct.
That's correct.
You'll be voting in regards to the ordinance, and you have given staff direction as it relates to the fee.
Correct.
That helps make sure everyone's on the same page.
So this has been listed as a public hearing. Anyone interested in speaking, please come to the podium and identify yourself, and also give me your address.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Council Members, James Lipscomb, 328 East Main Street, Clayton, North Carolina. I supported at the planning board level going to the 750 and doing away with the 50% credit that is now given to open space subdivisions. As a developer in the community, I'm very concerned about the overall increases and the relative quickness of the increases that would be potentially going up to $6,000. I think a lot of effort needs to be put into discussing that with the development community, where the development community's actually heard, and it's not just a breakfast where you're telling the development community what the new standards are, but actually having a dialogue with the development community. So I hope you guys take that into consideration and before any additional fees are imposed.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will then close the public hearing and turn it over to the council.
After consideration of the recommendation of the planning board and plan director, I move to approve case number 2019-8601. And to approve the statement of consistency and reason, including the agenda package with modification.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Please note that the vote's three to one, I'm sorry, four to one in favor. Next item on the agenda is 2019-101-0A, Architectural Standards.
Samantha, the Will and Labor Planning Director. This is another ordinance amendment to our Unified Development Ordinance, but it is, again, in Chapter 155, under Design Standards, and it's for non-residential and multifamily residential. The request is to amend the ordinance to require structures to be architecturally consistent on all sides visible from the right-of-way or adjacent properties. This is already included in the adopted general design guidelines, but it is not currently in the ordinance. Most commercial site plans, industrial site plans that come in, they do adhere to this regulation already just by choice, and they choose to have their building be architecturally consistent on all four sides. An example of something that would not be architecturally consistent would be three brick facades and then a metal facade on the back. Sometimes you do see that. This would include for all non-residential, so that would be commercial, office, industrial, and any multifamily residential. This does exclude townhomes that are built to single-family residential building code. And also, this is for any building that's visible from a right-of-way or an adjacent property. And some of that may not, so this may not apply on a very large site, and I'll just use Novo or Griffles as an example. If you can't, they have a building somewhere in the interior that you cannot see from another property or the right-of-way, that there may be, they might have to do this. But generally, majority of the buildings, majority of the properties would have to follow Staff does recommend approval of the ordinance amendment, and Planning Board also recommends approval of the ordinance. And just as a note, we have one or two more ordinance amendments coming through, but we will begin our UDO rewrite July 1, so very excited about that. Thank you, guys, for that. And this is the ordinance amendment for tonight.
Okay, this has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the podium and give us your name and address. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council.
After considering the recommendations of the planning board and plan director, I move to approve case number 2019-1001-0A, and to approve this statement of consistency and reason, including in the agenda packet.
I'd like to amend the case number that was just mentioned. It should be 2019-101-0A. He said 1001. Do I hear a second?
Second.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to old business, the abandonment portion of Horn Street.
Yeah, I think this is the last one for me. This is the, the resolution to adopt, to begin the process to advertise for the abandonment of Horn Street. This was previously done, and at the last meeting, it was not continued to a certain date, so we are starting the process all over. This will consist of four weeks of advertising, and that has already been submitted to the newspaper, so we would like to adopt the resolution to begin the advertising for the abandonment of Horn Street for the July 15 meeting. And also, there will be a community meeting on Monday, July 1, in the Rotary Room across the hall at 6:00 PM to go over the results of the traffic study. We invite everyone from the public to attend so they can hear from our engineer and our consultants.
Any questions, staff?
I have a question, just want to clarify, that this is, is a procedural thing, that vote tonight is not actually abandoning the street, it's simply allowing this council to consider that point at the July 15 public hearing. This is following the statute. You have to go through this procedure to actually set that public hearing, but it is the intent that on that July 1 meeting, and then again on the July 15 meeting, that the engineering firms that have helped with the traffic study and the parking lot design will be available and presenting information and hopefully answering all questions that people might have. Again, the question is still very much there for the council to decide if, in fact, they, what they want in that parking lot, and I mean, I think everyone's minds are open to what the engineers are going to tell us, if the yield or design of the parking lot as has been presented, and then we're going to consider both options, and so this leaves that door wide open for us, but we have to go through this process to be able to do one of the options.
Any questions, staff? I want to personally thank you for that description, because I want to be real clear that we're not proposing to close the road at this juncture.
That's right.
We're only public seeing a public hearing.
My apologies for any confusion.
So we need an adoption for the resolution. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion in a second to approve the Resolution 2019-24. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is new business. We go to stormwater program update.
Good evening. Rich Capola, Director of Public Services. I'd like to introduce Hunter Freeman with Withers and Ravanel. I think we introduced him several months back when he began a study of the town's current stormwater program and upcoming requirements related to changes to our NPDS Phase 2 permit. So I'm going to ask Hunter to kind of go through what his findings are and lay out the roadmap for us to move forward.
Thank you, Rich. Pleasure to be here tonight. Very, very quick and basic slideshow here to just outline some of the major stormwater requirements that the town, and our, our progress on this project to date has been to analyze the existing town program, analyze and discuss with Mr. Capola the current town staffing and management of that, and then compare that to the rules and their requirements, and sort of do a bit of a gap analysis there to just get a current status of where we are. So four major stormwater regulations that pertain to the town. I'll go through each one in a little bit more detail. The Neuse River rules, you... The Neuse River rules, you may have heard them referred to as nitrogen regulations, and those are forthcoming and soon to be on the town. So starting with the big one, which is a NPDS Phase 2 stormwater permit. The town was delegated, designated a Phase 2 program in 2010, has its first permit. Then the permit is up for renewal, or has recently been, is up for renewal with minor changes. But the general requirements include a written plan, annual assessment, and funding. Now, many of these duties are handled by Johnston County right now. The town has partnered with Johnston County to administer these on behalf of the town. And we'll go through each one of the six minimum measures very, very quickly here. I'll keep these brief. So public education outreach is just an engagement or educating the public. Construction site runoff and post-construction stormwater deal with construction activities, new developments, the design of the basins that hold stormwater runoff, and the long-term maintenance and operation and inspection of those. Illicit discharge is ensuring that your stormwater pipes only carry stormwater and do not carry septic system runoff or sewage or other non-permittable discharges that may end up in the creeks. And good housekeeping applies to the town program. So just a very quick outline there. The Neuse River rules are state code. The repair and buffers have been present in the town. The town is subject to those rules. That program is administered by the state as far as impacts to areas within 50 feet of mapped streams. Wastewater discharges is also applicable here and only applies to Little Creek Water Reclamation Facility, so that's been handled by town staff to date and administered by them. Urban Stormwater Management is going to see some changes coming up with nitrogen regulations, which have applied to 13 communities in the Neuse Basin in the next review of those, which are out for public hearing. And the state's writing those rules right now. Clayton will be rolled into that program. That requires nutrient offsets for new development projects, as well as agricultural runoff reduction measures. Soil and Water Conservation District has handled the agricultural standards and the nutrient management side of things to date, and probably will for the foreseeable future. Two other programs that apply to stormwater, water supply watershed regulations. The town has some, what they call WS4, water supply watershed protections that apply to density. There are state rules that handle those, and the town's ordinances and Johnston County's program comply with those, so they're pretty much a back burner that are covered by other rules. And last but not least is the FEMA flood insurance program that the town has ordinances that govern what development is allowable within those mapped FEMA flood hazard soil and flood zone areas. And then that's handled at town plan review stage to ensure compliance with that. And compliance with that allows residents of the town in Clayton to purchase flood insurance and be covered by federally backed programs for flood insurance. So that is a very quick run-through of those. I did not want to take up too much of your time, but I'm happy to answer questions. As I said, most of these programs are currently administered by Johnston County, and the vision and what we're studying right now is the potential for the town to take over ownership of these programs and management of their own stormwater program at this point. So that is something we will discuss with the town engineer in the next step, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Satterfield?
I've got one question. You hear about the Neuse River basin all the time, the rules we have. Does Cape Fear River have the same rules we do?
Cape Fear River does not have the same buffer rules. Portions of it do. The Jordan Lake Basin upstream of, which is Hall River, but upstream of the Cape Fear does have buffer regulations. The state stormwater program covers the post-construction side of things, and those are generally the same as what the town has. It just depends on the specifics of it. What's that?
They're hit as bad as we are.
The Cape Fear does not have a nitrogen nutrient export limit. The areas upstream of Jordan Lake do.
Do they have better lobbyists than we do, or what?
That's it. That's a question I'm not prepared to answer at the moment. I don't know what discussions Wilmington and those have had on Cape Fear. They have had fewer fish kills, I think is the reason for it. Neuse River Basin and Tarpan, Tarpanico Basin have both had numerous fish kills over the past 20 years, and those have generally spurred the regulations to be enacted.
Any other question? I have one. To embark on this path, to take over this responsibility, when would you figure that we would go live?
I think you can go, well, I would recommend we go live in stages, though it depends on the amount of new regulation and the amount of staffing needed. But the general erosion control and post-construction rules are pretty well matching existing town ordinances. There's not a lot of change related to those, so those could come online sooner. Certainly, good housekeeping and public education outreach, those can be pulled back from any county participation there, and those are managed within the town itself. So to give you a general timeframe, the first phase of town ownership of this program is probably six months at minimum. There are ordinances that would need to be passed, and some things that would have to be reviewed by the State Environmental Management Commission before the town would legally be responsible for administering those.
And what's the advantage of us taking this program over rather than subcontracting it?
Well, to date, there's, and in discussions with staff, there have been some issues with Johnston County and their administration where they were notified of deficiencies in their program because the town had delegated authority to Johnston County. When they have a violation, the town has a violation. And that's one primary reason for looking at this. The other one, from my perspective, is that this gives the town ownership of their whole program and allows the town to coordinate that with other comprehensive planning and land use effort without having to delegate it to a third party that is just looking at the black and white, does this comply with code? This gives the town the ability to control their own destiny, for lack of better explanation there, and really take ownership of their responsibilities, as well as forwarding how these rules integrate with development plans and the growth of the town over time.
And with respect to cost, would the, is the cost essentially the same, or would we be looking maybe a little more, or possibly a little less?
I don't know if Rich wants to expand on this. I have not looked at the direct costs that you're currently working out with Johnston County. What we're sort of ballparking right now is this will require extra staff within the engineering department at the town. Now, planning staff and others that are currently on board would take up some of that. But there are also decisions to be made as far as, for instance, inspection of stormwater control measures. That can be a town program with a town utility that's a fee paid by the owners, or it can be something you delegate to the property owners and have them report back. So there's different levels of effort there that would determine the final staffing requirement.
Okay, thank you. Any other question? Next item on the agenda will be fiscal year 1819 budget closeout ordinances.
Good evening, Robert Mackay, Finance Director. Tonight, we have three budget amendments that's required for statutory compliance. The first one is the Salary Reserve Adjustment Amendment. It's related to the town's mayor program. The second one is on the Water Sewer Fund to cover the projected cost overrun related to the, to complete the infrastructure improvements on the Horn Street project. The last one is simply a closeout for the Rollingwood Tepro Project Ordinance. I'll be happy to entertain any specific questions.
Any questions, staff? If this requires a motion, we can have one motion for all three ordinances. Councilman Thompson?
I make a motion to approve all three ordinances as presented by the finance director.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve ordinances 2019-06-07, 2019-06-08, and 2109-06-09. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda will be Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay, tonight, we have a, related back to the HB 436. That statute requires the town to establish a capital reserve fund. And what we have to do is we have to recollect those cap, those new system development fees. Those fees go into our primary water sewer fund. The legislation requires us to transfer those revenues on an annual basis over to this newly created capital reserve fund. The capital reserve fund, as the resolution is in place there, or established in that, we have to link those, the expenditure of the, related to those capital reserve funds we collect, and we have to relate it to a capital project based upon our capital improvement program for the water sewer fund. And so what's even more convoluted in some respects is that when we want to spend that money, we have to transfer it back out of the capital reserve fund, either over to the water sewer fund or to the capital project fund where it would be spent. So this is kind of our housekeeping to start out, start out of the gate with creating the capital reserve fund, transferring the revenues we've collected to date so far over to it.
Any questions, staff? Do I hear a motion to adopt a resolution?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
You have a motion in a second to approve resolution number 2019-26. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. So do I hear a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 2019-06-10?
Second.
You have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is the AMI Finance Installment Agreement.
Okay, we, as council recalls, at last council meeting, we presented the bid results for the AMI project. Tonight, what we're doing, we actually have the resolution that grants us to enter into that contract with Bank of America. A copy of the, a proposed copy of the agreement is actually included in the agenda package. So that's what we're here tonight for, is ask council's formal approval to enter into that agreement with Bank of America. This item is slated for approval by the LGC on their July 9th meeting, and we've pre-agreed to a tentative closing date of July 16th with Bank of America, which is predicated on the LGC approval. We have no reason to believe at this point that the LGC would not approve financing for the project.
Any questions, staff? Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to approve resolution 2019-27.
Second.
You have a motion in a second to approve resolution 2019-27. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next item are staff reports. Town manager?
No report.
Town attorney?
No report.
Town clerk?
Reports, thank you.
Any other staff? Seeing none?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and councilors. Before y'all, on the screen is kind of a summary of some of the benchmarks or target dates as we move forward with the Parks and Recreation Bond Referendum, and just wanted to come before y'all this evening and highlight a couple of those that are ones that are targets for us, a couple of them are kind of can't misses. And I just really wanted to make sure that these were in the forefront of y'all's mind, as well as the, those watching at home. Coming up on July 15th, at our July council meeting, we'll be coming before y'all and asking for the adoption of a resolution to introduce the bond order and call for a public hearing, similar to the conversation we had earlier with Samantha, where we'll, at that point in time, we'll schedule the public hearing. There won't be the public hearing on that date. It'll be, it'll be scheduled. And it'll be scheduled for September 3rd. At that point in time, we hold a public hearing. Obviously, we'll take feedback from anybody who wants to call at any point in time, and obviously, folks are welcome to come to any of our council meetings and speak then as well. But on September 3rd, will be the official public hearing for the bond order. And at that point in time, we'll also ask for the adoption of the resolution, adopting the bond order and calling for the referendum. That'll lead us to the July, excuse me, November 5th election date. At that point in time, we hope to have the bond referendum on the ballot, along with the council elections and the mayor's election that'll be taking place at that point in time. Assuming passage of said bond on the, at the December 2nd meeting, we'll come before y'all with a resolution to adopt and certify the results. And at that point in time, we'll get down to the business of moving those projects forward. During winter and spring, we'd be working on design. And then by summer, at that point in time, we'd be ready to start obligating or suspending dollars, and we'll be working with the finance department and obviously with council to either make a bond sale or perhaps kind of loan ourselves some money via a continuing resolution if we wanted to perhaps finance or kind of front ourselves some money for perhaps some design at that point in time. But summer is about the time we'd be coming back to y'all and actually spending real dollars. So there are more little benchmarks behind the scenes, and Director Mackay's got those well in hand, but these are the ones that are ones we wanted to kind of keep in y'all's forefront. Answer any questions?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Any other staff? Seeing none, I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the podium and identify yourself.
Reed Smith, 114 West Main Street. Sorry, I didn't get here in time for the rec fee discussion. I was caught in 45-minute traffic back from Raleigh. I noticed a public hearing. I'm okay just giving general comments, not expecting a response at this time in the general public. I just didn't know since it was a public hearing if there was a procedural thing there.
Not at all. It's to the will of the council.
Okay. Just first, James, kind of feel me, and y'all are going to wait for some recommendations from staff on, before making any decisions. But first, I just wanted to thank you, the schedule that was in the packet tonight does seem like a step in the right direction and was better than previous, so I do appreciate at least that consideration from the council. Just a few questions, which I believe have been delegated that I'll continue to bring up. One, for grandfather projects, or grandfathering of projects, especially ones that are recent. I understand projects that have been on the books for three to five years, they've had their time. I would just request, recent projects that have been approved will be considered. Two, when the fee is collected, it was brought up at our developers' breakfast, just what, what the impact is on the development community for fees at recordation, and somehow delaying that till after plat has been recorded. Then lastly, just, I appreciate the schedule that the town has put, trying to project out fees for the greater future. I think it's important that the development community just understands what the future looks like. If we're going to have $6,000 rec fee lots and $5,000 system impact development fees, and it's going to cost $11,000 to record a, record a lot in the town of Clayton, at least the development community will know that, and whether they can choose to develop in Clayton or not. I also appreciate the disclaimer on the chart that says it will be evaluated at that time. I cannot imagine fees will, that rec fee will get that high in the town of Clayton, even higher than Knightdale, Garner, Zebulon. But who knows what will happen three years, three or four years from now? Maybe theirs will be. But I believe y'all have left it open-ended enough to put the development community on notice, but while also reserving the right to evaluate that as time goes on, because I, today, I just can't fathom fees that high. But time will tell. And so just put, put that on your mind.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Council comments? Councilman Holver?
I'm a little concerned in reference to this recreation fee. My feeling is we should charge fees to cover the cost of what we're doing. Charging fees to build a lot, to buy, to do recreational improvements, we should do that, bond issues.
Anyone else? I have a question about the status of the improvements on West Horn Street. Can somebody speak to that with respect to where we are and when we expect completion, and what has caused the delays?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I'm curious to hear why it's taking so long for the improvements to be done on West Horn Street?
The Street Project, sorry about that. So far this year, we've had approximately 36 weather days. That was through end of April. Their contract was full completion by the beginning of June, so add those 36 days on, unfortunately, it's pushed the completion of the contract time back. In addition to that, we've encountered significant amount of unsuitable soils within the roadway area, so that's additional time that we weren't anticipating for import, basically of suitable fill for the, for the road structure to be built on. So, based on my conversation today with our construction project administrator, they were supposed to be proof rolling this upgrade today. Hopefully, the weather holds out for the rest of the week, and that'll allow them to finish up curb gutter, essentially get stoned down hopefully in the next week or two, and pave that out by the end. We're trying to get it done by the end of the month, if possible, but based on the contractor's current performance, whatever date they've given us at this point, we've had to push it back. They are subject to liquidated damages. Once those days come out, we've asked them to give us their final, or an updated request for any additional weather days that have come just in the last two months that they have not provided to us as of yet. But we are staying on top of them, trying to diligently get that completed as soon as possible.
And what type of communication have we been giving the citizens who live on West Horn? And maybe more specifically, are they, are they consistent? Are they inconsistent? Are they correct? Are they incorrect?
So, at the beginning of the project, I hand-delivered letters to each of the residents, spoke to many of them if they were home and answered the door. It had my personal cell phone number on it. And then, as the project progressed, we also sent out emails that we had to everybody, so they had my email, and several would reach out and say, hey, what's going on? It's a sunny day. There's nobody out here. What's happening? And I would reach out to the construction project coordinator and say, hey, do you know what's happening? And then relay those answers to those individuals that did reach out to me. As we moved past the point of the initial letter, when I had proudly announced we'd maybe be done this, you know, before the summer, we did another communication. I walked that around personally to each home. I talked to a number of them. They obviously shared frustration that this has taken as long as it has. But, you know, I know they're trying to keep the end result. We're investing more than a million dollars in the street, and it means all-new water and sewer. And they all say, oh yeah, we did, we had problems before with water and sewer, and, you know, it'll be great to get a new paved road. And they all had ditches. A lot of them were super excited when I first ran around and talked with them, like, you're going to get rid of the ditches? Oh my gosh, that's great. But it has drug out. And I share my sympathies, but I don't have to come home to it every day. So, if you are hearing from them, it's because every day, they come home to a dirt road, and they're, you know, they're past that point that they thought we would have been done this. But they've been very good with me. And I know that Andy spoke with several people that I talked to last week that had individual issues, like, I have this problem in my yard, or I have this cracked driveway. Can you help with that? And he's been addressing those one-on-one with everyone.
Okay. Thank you.
I did want to also note, when they got in there with the utilities as well, there was some information that we had for certain utilities that we thought were going to be able to remain, and fortunately, when they opened up the ground, we ended up having to do some additional change orders to replace portions of the main that weren't originally anticipated. So that did also delay them a little bit on the front end, as well as it's an urbanized area that's obviously had many years of construction. They found a lot of other things buried that were not documented. So, early on in the process, we lost some ground just based on the fact that water services, water tie-ins, and actually a small section of water main that were not documented were found, and we had to address those as we went.
Okay. That I will take a motion to go into closed session. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Need to make a motion to go back into regular session. Have a motion in a second to go back into regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Like a motion to adjourn? Second.
Have a motion in a second for adjournment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carries.